...to have with the City Council Councilors, as you well know, there are seven of them. Four of them will be elected, but I am sure that every one of them has given some thought about what they would want to do with the city. So all their ideas are going to be fantastic, and I appreciate you being here and listening to them. Because of the nature of the event, and because we all watch the news, I'm going to encourage you to be encouraging of them. If you want to applaud, applaud. If you want to heartily applaud, applaud. If you want to give a little golf clap, that's fine, too. Let's just avoid any kind of boos and heckling, and this is Napoleon, Ohio. I don't expect it, but let's just, I have to say it, let's just avoid it. If at any time you need to use the bathroom, there's a bathroom when you go right here, past the cookies, and behind there is a handicapped accessible bathroom. If there's a long line there, and you go down the stairs and this way, wind all the way around to the left, there's a women's bathroom. On the hall to the right, there's a men's bathroom that have all the character of being original to a building that was built in 1903, but better plumbing. So, I asked Jen Lazenby, for the editor of Northwest Signal, to moderate this, and I asked her to moderate it because I figured somebody who edited the signal would have a greater knowledge of the kind of things that are going on in this city than I do. But can I ask you one, two things? And these are things I asked of the Rotary and the Lions Club. By raising of your hands, how many of you subscribe to the signal? A good number of you, thank you. How many of you are on Nosy Neighbors of Napoleon, Ohio? Also, a good number of you, and I know some of you probably found out about this from that. It's a, we live in a society that it's difficult to get people interested in local politics, so I am so glad that you are here. Let's begin.
Thank you for joining us this evening. We're going to start with, first of all, just a little bit, if you could keep your answers to about two to three minutes per answer or per question. So let's start with, just tell us a little bit about yourself and why you decided to run for a seat on Napoleon City Council, and we're going to go alphabetical for this, so we're Shelley.
Hi, I'm Shelley Conroy. I was born and raised in Yavlos, Ohio, moved to the Liberty Center, but was a freshman at high school. I moved here eight years ago.
Shelley, your mic is on.
I don't think your mic's on. Ha, the better. Okay, so I moved to Napoleon about 28 years ago, married my high school sweetheart after so many years. I am running for City Council because our Napoleon angel, Kelly Burkhardt, she asked me to run for City Council. She is having issues with the homeless and getting help with them. I feel very strongly that we, I can help in some different areas. I do run in Hampton in Defiance, Ohio. I've run that for eight years. I've worked for Hilton for that long. Hilton is an amazing company to work for. I learned a lot of teamwork, building skills from them, classes, you name it. So anyways, I would love to be on City Council.
David Cordes. I'm a Republican, and I'm currently sitting on City Council in Napoleon. I decided to run again because I believe in being actively involved in our community. I would like to continue being on council as for fiscal conservatism. As a local business owner, I believe supporting pro-business values. I also listen to our residents to try and, and work to ensure their voices are heard and to help support the future of our city. This is the area where I grew up. I graduated from Napoleon High School, celebrated with friends and family here, and this is my hometown. After college, I returned to open my chiropractic office in 2000, and I have been serving our community here for over 25 years. I have the best interest in seeing Napoleon grow as a local business owner, as a resident, and as a member of our community. Thank you.
My name is Victor Dawson, and tonight I have with me my wife Angie and our daughter Maya. I'm a 1990 graduate from Hogate High School. I attended Northwest State Community College and earned my CDL Class A license. I went to Owens Community College, where I earned several supervision certificates. I went to school for heavy equipment operators and earned my license there in Columbus. My wife Angie and I are owners of Core Residential, where we employ 45, 45 employees right here in Napoleon. We run supportive living homes. We have six of those homes right here in Napoleon. And we, our employees go to this, the individual's home, where we work with, on skill developments with them throughout the day, and we help manage their, we help them manage their own We have, we also have three day programs right here in Napoleon. The TLC Activity Center, it's an activity center for, it's like a social center for older individuals with developmental disabilities. We started Top Dog and Maya Sweet Treats Restaurant, where we employ individuals with developmental disabilities. We teach them job skills in a restaurant setting, and they also earn a paycheck. Our next program is the WOW Program, the World of Work, and I started a lawn care service out of that program. I work with individuals there where they've never used a push mower and, or any type of lawn equipment, and now these, these guys are using zero-turn mowers. All over Napoleon, we have contracts here, and they enjoy doing that all day, if I let them.
Hello, everyone. My name's Addison Gray. A little bit about me, I grew up just down the river outside of Grand Rapids. I went to ICU High School where I graduated, and then went off to Owens for computer electronics engineering. I had the misfortune of graduating during the '08 economic meltdown, which made the field I went into disappear into computer land, so it doesn't exist anymore, fun. I am an Eagle Scout. I made, I did my project in Weston, Ohio, in order to improve their parks. I grew up on a farm, and now I'm blank. So I think that's where I'm going to end, just the gap.
Oh, booming voice, gotta dial that in. I feel a little ill-prepared. I don't have cards or anything cool like that, so I'll just tell you a little bit about myself off the cuff. I'm Jordan McBride. I graduated in 2008 from Napoleon. I grew up just outside of town on Ellen 108. Went to college, got a mechanical engineering degree and a minor in business. Had every intention of getting away from this town, and God had different plans. I fell in love with my wife, got married, and as a result, fell in love with this town again. I got onto council, I'm currently on council by appointment. I was talking to my wife one night, and I said, "I don't know why, but I've got this feeling I should go for City Council." And she goes, "That's crazy, like, there's not anything for a couple of years. What are you talking about?" Kept bringing it up, kept reading the newspaper, kept saying, "I think I could do something, like, I just feel this calling, I don't know what's going on." All of a sudden, Mayor Bylerkey's seat came open, and ended up getting an opportunity to go for an appointment, and ended up taking that slot. So God has kind of had his hand in all of this. I don't have signs around town. I prayed about it, kind of threw it out there, and felt like God said, "Whatever happens, happens," and I'm okay with that. So I really appreciate your vote. It's not saying that I don't want to try. That's saying that I'm leaving this to God's hands. I really appreciate this community, and thank you for the opportunity to serve it.
Yes. I'm Cynthia Myers, a 46-year resident of Napoleon. I've worked at Factory, at The Factory here locally, and I was a massage therapist for 17 years. I am a thinker and an observer, which is why I have been going to the council and committee meetings the past few months. And yes, I need notes. I saw the City Council seat as an opportunity to help people be heard through me, so vote for me.
Hi, I'm Meredith Wolfe. I am born and raised in Napoleon, Ohio. I love this town. I graduated from Napoleon High School in 2009. From there, I went to Miami University and got my degree in early childhood education. I immediately after graduating from college, married my college sweetheart, and we moved to the Dayton area for his job. So I, in that time, about 10 years, I taught kindergarten in a small rural farming town, which always kind of reminded me of home. So I'm really used to talking to five-year-olds, so I'm pretending you're all five-year-olds right now. But I have a passion for helping people. I had two sons in that time, they're six and seven now, and when they were about three or four, we decided that it was time to move closer to home. My husband is from Toledo, and we really wanted to raise our kids near their grandparents and cousins, and living in a small town like Napoleon was really important to us. I taught St. Paul for one year, first grade after moving back, and now I am a personal trainer at Optimal Performance Fitness. I love serving this community. I have a heart for small local businesses. I'm on the Board of Outreach at St. Paul Lutheran Church, and I serve on the Napoleon Alive Committee. I want this town to grow. I want this town to thrive. I want my kids to grow up in this town and appreciate everything that it is, and for that reason, I'm running for City Council. So please vote for me.
Thank you very much. The second question is, what do you feel is the biggest issue facing Napoleon, and how would you address it? This time, we're going to start in the middle, so we'll start with Addison.
Let's see here, biggest thing facing Napoleon. Well, I would think that would be the stagnation of the business varieties. We have lots of pizza places, we have lots of fast food, we have lots of gas stations, and that's kind of it. There's like a couple little restaurants, but then that's, like, as an outsider, growing up in Grand Rapids, you know, coming here was for a handful of things, but the furniture store closed down, you still have the other one. So I would say it's the decreasing diversity of businesses, so then people are now going away from town to spend their money, bleeding away the economic interwovenness that the town once had. Now, how do you fix it? That's a difficult question. This is a difficult answer. There's a lot of threads that you have to weave and unweave in order to fix such a thing. Can it be done? Yes. Will it be done quickly? No. That's why I have.
Can you repeat the question, just so I can make sure I fully address it?
What do you feel is the biggest issue facing Napoleon, and how would you address it?
So I think it's multifaceted. I think that we have two issues simultaneously that are kind of the big issue. Business is one of them for sure. You see all the empty storefronts that are around town, and it seems like they continue to happen. You drive through downtown, and it seems like there's as many empty as there are full right now, and that's really disappointing to see, because we have a beautiful downtown, and it's a great asset for the city. The other thing that I really worry about is affordable housing. I'm not talking about low-income housing, I'm talking about just affordable housing. I was very blessed that we got an opportunity to buy a house before the housing market skyrocketed, before supply got very, very short, especially in Napoleon. The days of finding a $100,000 home when you're starting out and coming back from college seem to be gone. So how do we address both of those issues? I think that you have to work hand-in-hand with the CIC. I don't want to get in their way too much, they're very good at what they do, but we have to make the right decisions and the right incentives, whether that's in tax breaks, whether that's in, there's several levers you can pull as a council to try to entice businesses in, but really being aggressive on tax breaks, I think, is going to be big. And when I say aggressive on tax breaks, you have to balance that as well. I'm not saying huge tax breaks so that corporations can thrive. I'm talking about helping out mom-and-pop shops for the short term to get them launched and get them going, so that we can continue to have employees come in. Same thing with housing. I think we've had several houses that we've given some tax breaks to, to encourage developers to build. I think as we drive supply up, we can bring some of those prices down. I think that's a good move, and we need to continue that.
I believe the growing number of empty buildings in the city is a major concern, just like Jordan. Instead of tearing them down, alternative uses should be found for them. The only building that seems to be targeted is the old Central School, a building which has stood the test of time and is seriously, seriously awesome. It can be renovated, apartments, the civic center, a brewery, or an elevated restaurant. I knew I was going to do that. If you don't believe me, picture downtown Toledo, if any of you have ever gone downtown lately. Ottawa Brewing Company over in Ottawa, a renovated building. Kettering Golf Course, they took that and made it something very special. They're all beautiful now. I know people in this town can be motivated to do things. We have a new swimming pool, don't we? Vote for me, and I will help.
I believe a lot of the issues that we are facing as a city, they all boil down to funding and resources. It's difficult to balance what we have as a city after you pay the bills, you pay the loans, you pay your employees, and then what's left, we have so many ideas of what we should do, just making sure that we are able to find a solution, and what order do we need to fix things, or what order should we, should we go about doing certain things. I agree with my other fellow candidates that the empty buildings downtown are a big issue, and it's sad to see, because like, like, we all want, we all want Napoleon to thrive and grow, we want to see businesses coming to our town, and we want those businesses to do well and want to stay. As far as economic development goes, if I am elected, I plan on meeting with Jen Arbs at the CIC frequently to see how City Council can support her. Like Jordan said, I, we, I wouldn't want to step on any toes, but I am here to support. Like I said, I, I want to help. I want to help in the worst way, so I hope that if I am elected, I am able to do that. I'm here to listen and address any issues that, that you see. I want you to be able to come to me, so that I can take it to the rest of City Council, and we can help solve the problem. Thank you.
I foresee, I foresee an issue in our school systems. I think that needs addressed. It's kind of embarrassing being at work and hearing my guests talk about no busing in the area. So it's, that is an issue. I think the homeless issue is a problem, and it is going to get worse, a lot worse. I think we need to address that. We have a small trailer court on the other side of town on Huddle Road that is half-empty. I think we could take that trailer court, fix it up, put them in there, charge them a low rent, let them get on their feet, teach them how to do things, how to pay bills, how to cook, how to clean. There's many things these people don't know how to do. Most of them are from foster homes. We all know what foster homes are like. We have a lot of people that are just down and out, a lot of veterans. I don't like seeing the veterans on the streets, I see them all the time in my lobby, and I have to call Kaylee or Kelly to help me out. So we do have a homeless problem.
It is a tough economic climate. Businesses are having a hard time. That's why it's so important to support your local businesses. What's one of the most important issues facing our city? I'm going to say something a little different than the other guys. I think it's inflation. All expenses are growing, and this is a considerable challenge, and we need to keep those expenses in check. Unlike the federal government, local governments cannot print money. When our money gets low, you either have to cut costs, or control costs, or raise taxes. You don't have another option. I would like to continue to do the same things that I've done since I've been on council. It's in times like these, it's wise to control costs and reduce the need for raising taxes. Another concern is the creep of socialism. Although some of these services are necessary, we must resist the temptation to overuse them. It's important to limit and control these expenses. This happens when a service is added to a group, and everyone helps pay for it. The problem is, some people overuse these services and disregard the cost at the expense of everyone else. That drives up the cost of, for everyone.
The most, the most important issue the city is facing would be affordable housing. Allows smaller families to build a smaller home. We don't need $200,000 homes. Everyone wants to own the American dream. Building homes under $100,000 would be very affordable.
And our final question, what do you want to accomplish if elected? And for this one, we'll go reverse alphabetical, so we'll start with Meredith.
What do I wish to accomplish? If I'm elected, I, I hope to accomplish the, the growth of our town. Now, will that happen in four years? No, I want it to continuously grow. I want to help preserve our historic downtown. Sitting on Napoleon Alive, their committee has brought to light many issues, and so many of those people have so many wonderful ideas, and I hope to be a bridge with not only that group, but other groups in town, to the City Council and the city leaders, and, and see how we can really help grow our town and preserve what we do have, because what we have is wonderful. I hope to continue pouring into our youth. I agree with Shelley that we should have a good relationship with our school system, so building, building that relationship. We have a great law enforcement relationship with the community. Since moving back here, my kids have been able to interact with various law enforcement officers, whether it be with pedaling with police, they go on a bike ride and have ice cream with the police officers. I want to continue doing the things like that. Our Parks and Rec Department is amazing. Our golf course is amazing. So just pouring into what we already have. Not only pouring into what we have, but also supporting our elected officials and city employees, and I just hope to serve this community well. Thank you.
Besides the Central School, I am highly motivated to get that pipeline, sorry, under the river, since we are just west of the existing one. That is the cutoff point if we lose water, so I don't want to lose water. Another goal would be the sidewalks. My husband's aunt is an avid walker. She has fallen twice. Let's get them fixed. I'm very on board with Shelley to help with our homeless crisis. In order to uplift this town, we need to give these people the help they need and deserve, so let's get this done, and vote for me.
So if re-elected, I want to continue to serve. I really was brought up in this community, and the skills for leadership and the talents that have been fostered have all been because of this community. It's been because of the residents here, it's been the 4H program, it's been Napoleon Schools. So I want to continue to use those skills that I've been gifted with to continue to serve this community. I want to continue to do communication stuff. I don't, I know several faces in the crowd that have showed up at some of our coffee talks. We've had as little as one, we've had as many as 10, or 12. They're fantastic. I want to continue to engage on Facebook. Yes, Nosy Neighbors can be a little treacherous at times, but I do think that is a fantastic forum to connect, to say what's going on in town. I try to watch it regularly, just to know and get a beat on what's going on, so I want to continue, if I'm elected, to have communication and really know what's going on in this city. I kind of alluded to some of the plans that I had in my second question, I'd love to see housing development, I'd love to see business development, and as Dave kind of alluded to, being an industrial engineer, I'm a little obsessed with finances. I like to watch fiscal responsibility, and I want to continue to make sure that my kids can bring up their kids in this town.
What do you want to accomplish if elected?
What do I want to accomplish if elected? Well, most of that list comes from the over 600 doors I've knocked on, and the roughly half that many that I've actually gotten to talk to since I started walking around. And it boils down to, people want the recycling program expanded, which I understand, I came from Wood County, and they do way more recycling, and I was kind of taken aback by it, but I also believe that, much like them, it is an economic opportunity where they have fostered connections with small businesses that now buy some of that recycling and create products, and have brought jobs and more revenue into the area. It's taken a long time for them to do it, which is understandable, but no journey starts without the first step. Another thing is, people have voiced, much like Cynthia said, sidewalks. There are people who like to go around with their strollers, their rollerblades, sometimes their bicycles, and there's sections, at least towards the inner part of the town, that have the original stone flag sidewalks, are now crumbled into 1,000 little pieces, and you can't take anything more than, well, a bicycle across, but everything else, you have to go to the road. And then usually those streets have people going 15 over the speed limit, so then people are rightfully shy of going onto the road. Another suggestion that some of the people have said is having more bike lanes in the city, so there's actually a place for people to bike, and to also draw in people who bike from place to place, like the road bikers who go all the way across Northwest Ohio during the summers. And that's the end of my list, because that's all they talked about. And so, in conclusion, the reason why you should vote for me is, in order to grow And so, in conclusion, the reason why you should vote for me is, in order to grow a place, you have to think outside the box. Sticking to the same old things gives you the same old results. If you go, there's only option A, B, and C, there will only ever be option A, B, and C. So, thank you.
What I want to accomplish as a council member, I want to read Ephesians Philippians. I want to read to you Philippians, chapter 2, verse 3 and 4. Do nothing out of selfish ambition or vain conceit. Rather, in humility, value others above yourselves, not looking to own to your own interests, but each of you to the interests of others. What a great benefit to the community to keep the cultural center, help small businesses to succeed there. The reason why I'm running for city council is to, because I'm teaching individuals how to work in the community by building this bridge is one of the main reasons why I'm running for city council. Thank you for allowing me to speak with you tonight, and may God bless each of you.
What would I like to accomplish as a city council member? I would like to continue being your conservative voice for our community, and I support traditional Republican values. To be an advocate for responsible leadership. I believe in integrity, transparency, and accountability in government. And that's what I want to do. I would appreciate your support. Thank you.
Well, being born and raised a strong Democrat, I'm for the people. I want to know what the people want. If I get elected, I would like to see more involvement in the community. There's no reason, we all can't help the homeless. Y'all got a pot and pan or extra one sitting in the cupboard? We can use that. Let's get them, get the community involved. Let's be a town together. That's what I would like to see. And I would also like to see more infrastructure out at the truck stops. It's a perfect place for a bistro, bar, and a Hampton. Or actually, a Big Hilton with a restaurant in it, a fancy restaurant. That's what I'd like to see.
Would you please give our seven candidates another hand? And would you seven, please give them a hand, members of the City of Napoleon who are interested enough in our city to find out about you? They were way shorter than the two or three minutes that they were allotted. That would have gone a full hour, and we're not even close to a full hour. So I invite you to stay. Members of our church cooked a whole bunch of cookies over there. They have their name tags on, so if you don't remember their names, you can interact with them, ask them more about what interests you and what they said. Please stay, enjoy yourselves. Again, bathroom up here, two bathrooms downstairs, cookies, water. Because it's a church, let me close with prayer. God, thank you for these seven candidates. We know only four of them are going to make it to city council, but all of them have deep investments in this community, and we thank you for their investment in the community. We thank you for everybody who's here, who cares about our community enough to learn more about what the council does and the people who want to be on it. We thank you for our city, and we thank you that we live in a country where we can choose our representatives, because there are so many in this world for whom elections are a sham, for whom elections are an excuse, for whom elections don't exist. And we thank you that we live in this country where we have these choices. In Jesus' name, amen.